Call the meeting to order now. First of all, we'll have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brett, will you lead us in a prayer, please?
Pray with me. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow on us each and every day. Please be with all of those who are going through hard times, sickness, natural disasters, loss of any kind, and loneliness. Keep those who struggle to stay warm in the severe cold winter, so please keep them a safe haven. We are thankful for the Board of Education. They volunteer their time to assist with the growth and development of our students, and we are truly thankful. Their efforts are greatly appreciated by all those that they serve. We want to pray for our men and women of the armed forces as they fight for our country and the freedoms that go along with it. Keep them safe and return them home soon. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call, Jen.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Tru.
Present.
Mrs. Zimmer-Schied.
Here.
At this time, we're gonna have a special presentation to the board members in appreciation for the years of service to the children of Ponca City.
Okay. For those of you that don't know, January is Board of Education Appreciation Month, and without doubt, it is evident how much we appreciate our board. If you'll take a look at all the tokens and goodie bags. These ladies and gentlemen work tirelessly to make decisions on behalf of the best interest of our students. And they don't know it yet, but I'm going to have them stand, and I'm gonna tell you just a little bit about each person. So our president, David Kincaid. David, will you stand up really quickly? I'll move quickly.
Okay.
David was elected in 2006, so he's served on the board for quite a while. This is his second time to serve as president, and he also serves on the Board Property Committee. Dr. Kincaid owns and operates Kincaid's Veterinary Clinic. And on a personal note, they're not gonna like that I'm gonna say these personal things. One thing that I can say about David is he loves our school, and he's always giving everyone praise and telling them what a good job that they do. And we appreciate you. Dr. Kincaid, you do a great job. Dawn Newsom, and Dawn was elected in 1999. He is our longest-serving member. I didn't wanna say our oldest, but he is our longest-serving member. And without a doubt, he has the record number of times to serve as president, 12, to be exact. We used to keep electing him as president, and then we kinda shared the responsibility a little bit, shared the love. Dawn is a past recipient of the Oklahoma State School Boards Association Platinum Excellence Award, which is actually designed to recognize the time and commitment made by board members in continuing their education beyond the legal requirements. He serves on the Board Property and Finance Committee, and he manages the Ponca City Airport. And what I can say about Mr. Newsom, that experience counts for a lot. He's slow and steady, methodical. He knows this district inside and out. We appreciate all you do. Next, we have Mr. Robin Riley. So Robin, if you will stand up. Robin was appointed in 2012, and then he's actually on his next term, second term. He served as our board president one time, and it's probably your time again coming up shortly. He serves on the Board Finance Committee, and he is a retired Conoco employee, and he worked in telecommunications. And what I can say about Robin on a personal note, and he'll tell you this is true too. He's retired, and he goes through everything with a fine-tooth comb. And he asks us good questions that I promise you keep me on my toes and the rest of the district. He loves this district and wants to do the best for our students and our staff. So thanks, Mr. Riley. Next, we have Ms. Judy Tru. She was elected in 2004, so she is our second-longest-serving board member. She's served as the board president twice, and she was recently elected as the Oklahoma State Board Association's Region Three Director, serving Garfield Grant, K., Noble, Pawnee, and Payne Counties. She serves on the Board Curriculum Committee, and Judy is a retired schoolteacher and taught many years for PCPS. And what I can bring, what Judy brings to the table is her knowledge of curriculum, as serving as a teacher in our district. She's spot-on. She stays up with trends. She's supportive of anything that we can do to help our teachers improve, to ensure academic success for our students. So thank you, Mrs. Tru. We appreciate you. And our most newly-elected board member is Nancy Zimmer-Schied. She was just elected in 2017. She serves on the Board Curriculum Committee, and she works for Jupiter Sulphur here in Ponca City. And Nancy brings something unique to our board in that she is a parent of elementary and secondary students. So that unique perspective has made her an invaluable board member as well. So thanks for all you do, Nancy. On a personal note, I will have to say that these ladies and gentlemen are very supportive, will answer any questions, and they're just a phone call away. So I appreciate each of you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have a presentation of the Employee of the Month Friends of Education Award. The first is Certified Employee of the Month, Amy Hollingsworth, Library Media Specialist in Lincoln Elementary.
Amy Hollingsworth is wonderful and so deserving of the honor of being recognized as Certified Employee of the Month. She is patient, kind, and she goes out of her way to help whenever needed. She does her very best to make sure that the funds allotted to the libraries are used to the best extent. She not only serves as a full-time librarian at Lincoln, but helps the assistants at other buildings. She makes sure that she is available whenever the assistants need a question answered, and makes time in her extremely busy schedule to go in-person and check on the library assistants, and she is extremely busy. Amy has spent numerous hours shoving books for Union Elementary to ease the burden of the library assistant while she was out with a sick family member. She works with the classroom teachers to plan library lessons that help meet the state standards, and does an entire school reading challenge each quarter to encourage students to read books that are out of their norm. Amy is one of the kindest and most compassionate people that you could ever know. She truly serves our schools, not because she has to, but because that is who she is. She deserves to be recognized for her generosity and loyalty to her job and to all her fellow coworkers. It is with great honor that we award Amy Hollingsworth the Ponca City Public Schools Certified Employee Award for the month of January 2018.
The next award is Support Employee of the Month, John Diaz, Computer Technician.
Liberty has the pleasure of nominating John Diaz for Support Employee of the Month. John is always extremely friendly and willing to help solve any technology problem we may encounter. He goes above and beyond to check in while in the building to see if there are other areas of concern. We appreciate his willingness to help get us back on track always, and to keep our, what's our gatekeeper at the door? That's always, we've had lots of issues with that, and he's always been very helpful in getting us back on track with that. So thank you so much.
The third award is Friend of Education, Sonya Long, Volunteer of the Ponca City High School.
Sonya Long has volunteered countless hours the last few months as a senior class parent, with the homecoming float by finding a location and overseeing student plans and work hours, as well as community organization in support of the senior class in preparation of Great Escape. She is positive and pleasant with students, other parents, and community members. Sonya's efforts of supporting student success and school spirit are greatly appreciated. We are proud to have Sonya Long as Ponca City High School's Friend of Education for the month of January.
At this time, the union leaders, Zach Nagel and Mike Arnold, are gonna speak. Yeah, all of you, after this is done, we're gonna get pictures of the ones that got the awards. So they'll take you out in the hall and get your pictures.
These are a few of our union leaders. We have a total of, it's 32 at this moment right now. What is it, our fifth graders that wanna be, that wanna take the step up to be helpful with the community and with, you know, just locally. They come out with us, and then we, not just do we work on academics, but it's also goes to do with, you know, discipline referrals. There's just a few other things that we put together that, you know, lets them be in our group, and then we do all sorts of things around the community. Two of them are gonna say something about our union leaders real quick.
Hi, my name is Alexandra. I'm a fifth-grade student at Union Elementary. In Union Leaders Program, one of the character traits we have studied this year is responsibility. We have cleaned up the school grounds, worked the flower beds, and participate in many community activities. We helped at Oktoberfest by providing food, by providing food and volunteering our time for the Unity Gym session stand. We had fun participating in community events like the Oktoberfest. I think Union Leaders is really great because we help the school, the environment, and learn about responsibility.
Hi, my name is Cameron. I'm also in the fifth-grade Union Leaders Program. Another trait we have been focused on is caring. We join the circles of friend at Union Leaders to build the flow and participate in a part of light. We also volunteer our time to add the festival angels. These events really help involve in the Ponca City community. Other traits we be learning is citizenship, respect, trustworthy, and fairness. We looking forward to participating in more communities projects. Although this school year, rest of the year.
Questions? Great job.
Good job, kids. Thanks, Mike. All of you that got awards now can go out and get your pictures taken. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thanks for all you do.
At this time, Jenny Creach will introduce the guest for the 31st Ponca City Youth Leadership Project.
Evening. Sorry, I'm apparently struggling since it's evening, and I'm, you know.
Thank you.
So our 31st Leadership Class, last year, came up with a little bit different project. So if you guys have been familiar with the Leadership Class and programs through the Chamber of Commerce, the previous classes have done kind of a tangible event, community service, something for their project. We went about it just a little bit different, and here's what our project is. We have come up with a youth leadership program. When we met with our group to try to decide what our project should be and what we wanted it to look like, we couldn't really ever come to a good concisance on, we all had different ideas. But the one thing we kept coming back to is our youth. And we were loving our experience with our leadership class so much. We wanted to find a way to get our youth involved and get our youth to be able to experience a type of leadership program where they got to see their community and experience the way we were experiencing it. So our goal is, it changed over the course of the year, but what we finally decided on is we're going to look at doing a program that is a five-day intense program in June, where we would choose some sophomore classes, or some sophomore students to participate in this program. And we're trying to, we wanted, we're gonna be looking at combining our leadership program with, within a five-day period. So if you guys are familiar with that, it's usually a 10-month program, one day a year. We've switched that up to get it into a five-day period. And the curriculum is in the section four, and the project, this curriculum and projected agendas in section four of your book. We wanted this experience to be like none other for our youth to be able to experience. It can't per se that they've never actually, that isn't offered very often. It is offered at a state level. There's an Oklahoma Youth Leadership Class, but that can get kind of expensive, and it can be kind of hard for those kids to make that, to make it to Oklahoma City to participate in that. We want them to experience the places of Ponca City and the people of Ponca City that they normally wouldn't get to in a day-to-day experience, and kind of show them the behind-the-scenes look of how things are done. So this is the program qualifications. We also had a lot of discussions on who would be our target audience. What students would we, would we look at? What age would we look at? And we finally all agreed that the sophomore class would be a great target audience to be able to experience this this summer before their junior year, to be able to learn what other education opportunities are available, not only in Ponca City, but in K. County as well. And to give them to start really thinking and focusing on what is out there. Is it something that I'm gonna go on after school? Am I gonna go to maybe the tech school? Do I wanna just go find a job? And give them that experiences of what is available within the industry of our community. There is no fee for this program. That was something that we really wanted to make sure that our kids, the students did not incur, or the parents didn't incur. What we had to decide on is that they would be required to fulfill 10 hours of community service throughout their junior, the fall semester of their junior year. And that is kind of their ticket to do, to attend a field trip day to the Capitol the spring semester of their junior year. I've grown up in Oklahoma, and the leadership, our state Capitol session was the first time I'd ever been to our state Capitol. I'm 30-something years old. That would've been really nice to experience as a youth in our high school. So we have a committee that we've created through our youth leadership, or through our leadership program. Instead of doing the normal day chairs that are there, or the yearly chairs like our leadership has, we wanted to switch it up just a little bit, and we have a, we worked on getting a committee. So a group of the leadership, I email everybody out and say, hey, we're gonna meet on this date. We're talking on this. And this first, almost the first two rows bearing a couple people, we've got a group of our leadership here. We decided to go the committee route because not everybody can make every meeting, every group, every session, every time. So that's why we did that. The chamber, as you can see, Mr. Rich is here with us. The chamber, as a, as a group that is supported from the chamber by the, through the leadership program, they are supporting this program and are really working and encouraging us to see this through. And once we get kind of the blessing from you guys as a board to be able to work with our students in this, they're fully prepared to work with us in taking that over and being under the Chamber of Commerce. The Ponca City participation that we would need, that we would need is, we would really like to have a teacher, or a employee liaison to be able to accommodate us during the program. The regular leadership program goes throughout the year. Not all of our teachers or school staff get the opportunity to participate in this. This is a way that they could get a very brief presentation part of that. I'm gonna go quickly. The program layout would, we would open up the applications portion of it in the spring semester. We would do the application. There would be an interview process, and then they would be, they would get to know if they were a participant or not. We would have one meeting before school is out to go over what their expectations would be for the program. The program would be the first week of June, intense, five days of going, and then there would be a follow-up that, for the state Capitol Field Day in the spring semester of their junior year. So the program's schedule is, again, is in section four of your packet. It's gonna be with the tentative agendas. We really are fitting a 11-month program into a very tight five-day period. Any questions? In your packets also is the application in section two.
How many kids? I didn't hear.
I did not say. We're looking at doing 20 kids, and we'd like to have an equal ratio of about 50 female, 50 men. Yeah, but we think 20 right now is gonna be a great starting point for us to go to see how it works. If it's something that does need to grow, then we would work with the chamber and with the school on that.
So would you take the existing sophomores this coming spring for the class? Excuse me, or the ninth graders? It will be sophomores.
We would really like to have this thing kicked off this semester and have the program, the first program being offered in June of this year.
With sophomores?
So with the sophomores, with the current sophomores. You know, and the bad thing about this timing is it does kind of, you know, our juniors and our seniors do not get the opportunity to participate in that. And that is kind of a bummer, but we want to, as soon as we can, we wanna get this program up and going. Any other questions?
Sounds good. I know your adult leadership program's excellent. If this has the same effect on the community and what they learn, it's gonna be great.
That's what we're hoping for.
You guys do a good job.
Thank you very much.
Brett.
There's your catalyst.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
And the reason they wanted to do this in June rather than like their leadership group meets once a month, it's too much for our kids to be out of, out of class. So I think they came up with a great proposal.
You would need to make this an item for an agenda coming up, or how would you, are you gonna?
We could make it an agenda item. I don't think it needs to be an agenda item. I think if they get started in March, we're...
Is girls' state and boys' state for juniors, right?
Your management team decide who will represent the school out of themselves.
It's juniors.
Correct?
Yep.
They will be going into their junior year.
They'll interview sophomores. Sophomores will apply, and then it will be the summer before their junior year, and then the field trip will be when they're juniors. And I've met with Jenny in regard to this, and have spoken to Rich about it, and the district's very supportive. And like Jenny said so many times, our teachers don't get to participate because they can't miss a day of a month. I mean, we don't have that kind of leeway for them to be gone. So it'll be great for our teachers to, to be liaisons.
Are these ours to take home?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks so much. We appreciate it. Good job.
We don't have any public comments, so we'll go to item four. Reports for potential board discussion, building assessment reviews, Liberty, Roosevelt, and Union. So we have three principals tonight.
Jennifer, you're on. Well, I'm gonna be timing them.
Bonus points if we're done fast.
Seven minutes. I'll give you a two-minute warning.
Oh, we were told five. Because the national championship's on tonight.
Well, this isn't...
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks so much. We appreciate it. Good job.
Bye. What's the national championship score? Seven?
Yes, seven.
Although it's all SNC, so it's kind of...
Yeah, I know.
I know that Ms. Eret has shared with you our OCCT data from last spring, and so I...
Well, I have, just not publicly, just in a spreadsheet.
Okay, and so I did not include it as part of our PowerPoint to go over again tonight with you. This is our current reality. This is our December STAR test data. We take our STAR test once a month, the first week of every month, and so this is our most recent. This week, we are testing for January, so I went back to our December. The STAR tests are broken up into students that are on benchmark, which means that they have made, they're showing that they're gonna be on grade level by the end of the grade level. Some that were on watch, some that are intervention, and some that are in intense innovation. And so, in looking at our third grade, it looks very similar to what we expect and very similar to what our OCCT data told us last spring, especially to go to math, and I'll get back to perfect math in a little bit. We have a new fourth-grade teacher in math, and so we're working on really getting a lot of things set up there. But, again, close to 50% of our students are on benchmark for the STAR reading and math. And then our fifth grade again, I'm missing. We really worked this year on targeting a lot of our interventions and a lot of our support on the students that are, the intervention and the on-watch, helping to, and our SMART goals that are attached to that, their PLC meetings, and working on getting those students to the next, that bumping them up, that we're not just making that little bit of progress that they're looking to bump them up. Let next, they look every PLCs at our STAR data and our instructional data from our interventions, and track student progress and use that information to drive our instruction. What we do, we talk about data, our weekly PLC meetings. This year, in our faculty meetings, we're doing a book study on the power of teacher language and how crafting and forming our language in the way that we speak and instruct, how important that is, because we understand, when we get Liberty, that teacher effectiveness is the number-one detail of student success. You know, the more experienced our teachers have, the more training our teachers have, the better our students do. And so, you know, that teacher effectiveness is big for us, and making sure that all of our teachers are effective and have everything that they need. And so we work really hard in PLCs and in our faculty meetings to really provide teachers with that information. We are part of the state grant for Otis and PBIS, and so we do have monthly Otis meetings with somebody from OSU and the State Department who come and look at our data with us. And then we do have our PBIS, which is our Positive Behavior System, where we really focus on rewarding students for good behavior and then figuring out how to correct problematic behavior, but really focusing on that positive and that positive language and building relationships with students that we find is really important in our classrooms and our students. The last two years, we have really focused on implementing Kagan structures for student engagement. I know that Ms. Bogle is gonna have Mr. Adams come out and videotape in some classrooms, and so you'll get to see some of the Liberty teachers and students working with Kagan structures. For academic reasons, we have both, we implement them first with kind of fun, get-to-know-you kind of class building and team building, and then they morph into academic practices. We have found that students stay engaged. There are fewer behavior issues when students are hooked up and have a task to do versus, you know, doing a lot of sit-in lecture or independent practice. And so this is pairing students up. We're getting to take some teachers, or send some teachers to additional Kagan training. We will have all but two of our classroom teachers trained this spring, and so we're still just looking at two. And so then we'll have all of our teachers with the basic training and really be able to really push forward with, this is, this is something that we really believe in and is something important at Liberty. And so I'm excited for you guys to get to see those videos.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not talking loud enough. Usually people tell me I'm too loud. Oh, well, on TV. Oh, sorry. Sorry, TV audience. In our math, just staying focused on our district initiatives, which are listed, and in addition into working on Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, and I'll kind of focus on that in a little bit. Also, when I go back to the third grade, because we were really, really pleased with our third-grade math results and trying to replicate those in different grade levels.
replicate those in different grade levels. Our reading, again, staying focused on our district initiatives and district curriculum and our additional support that we received from the State Department with reading interventions. We have also been able to, with Title I money, hire an additional Title I assistant. And a lot of their job is pulling students individually and working on the specific skills that those students are lacking in. And teachers have been very excited. Sorry?
Two minutes.
Okay, two minutes. Oh, gosh, yeah, I said... This is our data wall from this year and we have varied it up this year a little bit differently. Last year, we were just tracking student numbers. This year, we have color-coded it like the STAR data gives us. And so, it's a very kind of visual. We can look exactly and see like all of that green, those are the students that are on benchmark, that are made the 50th percentile. And then, the blue is on watch, the yellow is intervention and the red is that urgent intervention. And so, it's kind of a very colorful visual for us to be able to look up and say, this is how many, and to be able to see that, those numbers. Looking forward, really looking at reducing teacher turnover, teacher effectiveness and keeping quality teachers in the classroom is very important at Liberty. Support for our growing ELL population. We're fortunate to have a support person who comes in and helps with that and also training on teachers. One of the big things for us is replicating our third-grade math practices. I think we were second in the district in third-grade math in overall scores last year. And so, really looking at what third grade's doing and making sure that we're doing those same things in fourth grade and fifth grade math are some of our big things that we're looking at this year. Did I get in? That seven minutes went a lot faster than I thought it was gonna go.
Let us go fast. But you did a great job. Any questions?
On the, your third-grade math teachers, are they seasoned teachers or career teachers?
One has five years' experience and the other one, this is just her third year.
But they're both, both very strong.
But they're both very strong. They're a strong team and they partner up and do a lot of things together. And they're also very open to implementing new ideas and they are both strong Kagan teachers.
Does, does one of them do all the math?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
They both do math?
They both do math, yeah. Our fourth and fifth grade are departmentalized.
Okay.
But both are third grade. And that's something that we've thought about really looking at, you know, about, does the , is departmentalization really working? Are we seeing the results or would it be something to go back to?
Thank you.
Yep, good job. Appreciate it. Good job, Jennifer.
Sorry, TV audience.
Okay, Rhonda.
Rhonda, please.
I was really glad to hear, Ms. Eret valued your experience, Dawn, because you've only been around a couple more years than I have. So...
Oh, sorry. It's okay.
Well, once again, I also felt like that, I didn't realize that Ms. Eret hadn't shared more of our OSTP results. But actually, what we use to drive our instruction is primarily the STAR reports and the literacy first continuum. So, that's what we're gonna look at today. If you look on the first graph, that's just where our building is, actually, current reality, as we want to call it. We're right at 75 to 77, as far, high as 85 in first grade with our students on grade level. When you move on to where we start looking and really starting to utilize STAR reading, you see once again, our STAR reading scores were about 50%. Six, you know, third grade has creeped up to 60%. But still, when you start thinking about a total building, it's only, that only half of our population is on grade level, there's a lot of work to be done. And so, that's what we're really trying to focus on and look at. When you look at our math scores, they're just, they're better to, to some degree. I think, we'll talk about here in a minute, I think there's a couple of things on that. We have a lot of, you see a lot more growth from the blue to the green, which means the, the blue was the first back in September and the green was most recently in December. Math is much more, to me, is black and white. It's not as, you know, there's not so much gray areas as reading instruction. Reading instruction is much more difficult, much more in-depth, especially when you get on into those third, fourth, and fifth grade levels. We have, if you look at our second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, we have a lot of new teachers this year at Roosevelt. Second grade, we have three teachers that have not ever taught second grade before. Two of those are brand-new teachers. In third grade, we have three teachers. One has experience with us, a couple of years' experience. The other two, brand-new teachers. In fourth grade, we have two brand-new classroom teachers. We have Mr. Hallam, who was a former coach, and then we also have Carrie Bartley, who has been a former assistant. So, once again, you're looking at two new teachers. In fifth grade, we have experienced teachers. So, we've, how we've approached looking at our data also has something to do with, with the, the experience of our building. So, we'll talk about that a little more in-depth here in a minute. Let's go on to... But one of the things that we do wanna recognize, and if you look at this graph, it's, it's, the reading is in red and the math is in blue, and that's students who showed growth. And we have to be pleased when we look across the board at our students that showed growth. Because you're only, you're talking about, you know, you look at second grade, you've got 90% of your kids in reading. I mean, we are pleased with that number. And we look at that growth in several different ways. But, the first thing we go back and look at, let's see if I can get my clicker to work. The first thing we look at, who are those kids who didn't show growth? When you look at that number, that's pretty, you know, 15 second graders didn't show that, show growth. I believe, I think we figured that up. That could be close to 25%, 20 or 25%. That's a lot of students. And then, third grade, I mean, you just look at the numbers. Those are kids who didn't show growth. So, we go, we move right on from there, then, so who are these kids? So, we run, we look at those kids by name. That's the first group that we look at. And, alright, so let's start here. Here are our numbers. And then, I'm gonna go to this slide and I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up a little bit and tell you. When we look, when we break it down and start looking at numbers and looking at individual kids, we utilize and keep in mind constantly the 21st century survival skills and the rocks of Roosevelt. And that gets into some things that we've, we always wanna balance what we're looking at or why we're looking at things. And when you, when you see, you see the critical thinking, creative thinking and problem-solving that balances off with our rocks that are problem-solvers. Collaborative across networks and leading by influence, that gets into our great expectation ties and what we believe about that. Agility and adaptability, are our kids able to adapt what they're learning in the classroom to the testing? Initiative and entrepreneurship that goes with, are they ready? Are they emotionally, physically, and intellectually capable and ready to take on the challenges? Is our great expectations, are we practicing enough written communication and oral? Are we working on complete sentences? Are we keeping, holding kids accountable for that great expectation practice? And then, are we assessing and analyzing information? Can they, you know, can they use their problem-solving? And then, are we keeping them alive? The curiosity and imagination, are we continuing and exciting them about learning? Because if they're not, that can tie into why these kids are not growing. So, all those things are things that we keep in mind when we move on to look at, to, we break down to individually look at students. So, then we get in to, here are the questions we ask. Those students, when you look at the students who didn't grow, there's a wide variety of who they are. Some of them are our top students and some of our, so we look at top students who have flatlined, we look at top students who have declined, lower struggling students that have declined, and very low students have flatlined. I mean, that, that's the starting place. And what are some of the causes? The very first thing that we always try to stress is rigor of instruction. Are we doing the right things in the classroom? Do we need more RTI? Do, you know, what's going on with that? Is it lack of effort? Is it there's high-impact life stressors? Or is there some emotional trauma going on in those students? Usually, when you see a flatline, especially if you've seen a student that's progressed and all of a sudden they flatline or decline, there's, there's reasoning for that. But once again, we always start with the teachers. Or the instruction and what we're doing in the classroom. So, let's look a little bit more specific. When you talk about rigor of instruction, one of the things that we've included this year is we've been really diligent about our PLCs, our mentor meetings. We've added where we have, I'm not going to say every month, but probably at least every two months, a meeting with our mentors and our mentees. So, our new teachers and our experienced teachers and myself. And we sit down and just talk about a wide variety of things. So that we're not repeating and that we feel like we're being more thorough in covering, you know, what are some things that we need, that you need to know about curriculum or instruction or just the day-to-day operations of Roosevelt or teaching. And we feel like that's made a difference in helping all those new teachers make the transition and be more effective in the classroom. Then we start, as, as we continue to look at instruction, we evaluate and reevaluate small groups within the classroom, using grade levels above or below. We're not only concerned about those kids that flatlined, that are, that are struggling, but we're concerned about those kids that are at the top of the list, that, that we need to keep moving. And so, we, we try to, to utilize, sometimes we move kids up and down during certain instructions. RTI, are we targeting skills? Our extended school days, multiplication mastery project, we have kids, I believe we had 40 kids there at 7:30 this morning, ready to take on and start working on their multiplication facts. So, that's been, we hope it's effective. This'll be the first year that we've tried that. We've done a reading roundup where kids come at 7 o'clock and practice their reading. That's been very effective and very, you wouldn't believe, some of those kids never missed and most of them had only a few absences. Individualized tutoring and then challenge programs, the gifted and talented. I'm hurrying, Shelley.
Okay. You, you met your limit.
Am I there? I'm past my seven minutes?
You're there.
Okay. Dead gum. Alright, let me go. Um, I wanna go, I wanna go touch this last slide briefly. The other thing I wanna let you know that we are constantly looking into with our students, and when you talk about Larry Bell, the people they brought this year about poverty, is why are we getting lack of effort? Sometimes we do feel like it's straight lack of effort. And that's when we start looking at individuals and we start looking, are these kids that just need instruction for test-taking? Do they need counseling, family support? You know, are they capable and equipped to be able to be productive in the classroom? Any questions?
I gotta at least ask one.
Okay.
Your 15 second graders that didn't show result or improvement?
Growth.
Yes, sir.
Can't that really be tied back to the fact you've got a lot of new teachers in the second grade?
Oh, sure. I mean, there are, there are a lot of factors.
That 15 probably wouldn't be that.
There are a lot of factors with, with that. I mean, that can be anything. We look at second grade when they're looking at the STAR testing, that's when they really become, begin to be able, I think, to show more if, what their true ability is. You know, because in first grade, they're still struggling with the computer, they're struggling with the setup. So, it can be, it can be related partially to that, but also, we have all new teachers. Other questions?
Roosevelt has 11 new teachers, to be exact, this year.
Eleven new people.
Is that enough?
Alright.
That's enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Rhonda.
Thanks, Rhonda.
You guys ready for a little something different?
Is it more than seven minutes?
Pre-view the football game?
I'll only take six. Here we go.
Rhonda, use one of yours.
Oh, do you see that? Uh-oh.
We have a tech person here.
Yeah, that's alright. I bet we can figure it out.
Who's that award winner?
Who's that award winner?
He left after the picture.
Really? What award did he win?
Ah. Ugh. What you saw right there at the end is our, is our new school creed that we changed. And what it says is, we are, we are confident, capable, we are thinkers, and we are the future. And so, we wanted to put those 21st century skills into our creed and that's what we're trying to do at our school. The classroom strategies that you saw on the video are about engagement. They're about giving students something relevant, opportunities to feel valued and worthy. We do this to, by presenting our students with Engage to Learn units that are designed to present real-world problems at various learning levels. A majority of our teachers have been trained in E2L. Students research, collaborate with others in order to come up with a finished product. Our scales that we, that I showed several examples of are designed at different learning levels so that students know where they're starting and how they can progress to mastery and beyond. Formative assessments along the way contribute to teacher and student knowledge so that we know, and students know, what needs to be re-taught and what needs to come next. We want to spread the use of Kagan in our building so that students are experiencing, experiencing it often. And when you saw the kids talking and, and working together and doing some different things... doing some different things, that was Kagan. And we are, those structures require students to interact simultaneously, to have positive interdependence, and also have individual accountability. That's what we want every time, every day, all day long. So, we are really, really, really trying to get Kagan going in our classrooms all the time. We have Kagan coming to our building to train us and Lincoln for two days in the next few months, so that will be something that we are, we are really looking forward to. Not only with Kagan is everyone in the class engaged with content, we're also asking kids to practice social skills. They're taking turns, they're supporting one another, and they're positively reinforcing one another, and that is such an important part of the curriculum. If kids are happy, if kids feel supported, if kids are engaged, then they'll perform. It's not easy. It's different. It's scary. It's a mind shift. It's non-traditional, and it is definitely a work in progress. If you, our, our STAR scores are not where they, where we want them to be. Our OCCT scores are certainly not where we want them to be, but we know that, and we know that we have to make a change in what we're doing, and it's scary to make that change. It really is, and it's hard. It's hard. It also takes perseverance, because our kids are not used to doing that. Our kids would just, you know, are used to, you know, sit down, be quiet, and do this worksheet. Now we're saying, "Get up, talk, think, do," and that's different, and we want it to be different. It has to be different. We're asking kids to take risk, and that's not easy. It's not easy for teachers, and it's not easy for students. But we think it's worthwhile in order to have kids who think critically, who are confident and capable, and believe that they can achieve their goals. So, those are some things that we're doing at Union. The Kagan and the Engage to Learn are the big mind shift pedagogical changes that we're making in our building right now, so.
Questions?
How many new teachers do you have?
We have through, brand-new teachers, I have two, new to our building, four, so... Yep.
Other questions?
Good job, ladies. You did a great job. Thank you. And I had shared the data with you, just the raw data and their scores, and we wanted these presentations for them to be able to tell you what they're doing to go to the next level with their data, so, thanks so much.
This time, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Okay, I want to give you just a little bit of a budget update. I will be very brief, but over the break on December 22nd, as a matter of fact, we did receive our midterm adjustment allocation, and as expected, it was down $211,000. We received $12,009,200, which was down $211,000 from our original adjusted allocation of $12,303,000. Long story short, we were down $1,211,000. That's the bad news. The good news is, at the beginning of the year, Brenda only budgeted what we actually received in fiscal year '17, which was $11,732,000, which means she is going to add $360,000 back to the budget. So, I think it's good that she didn't budget based on projections. She budgeted based on what we actually received, because we expected a shortfall in midterm, and that way, we didn't have to reduce. We could add back in. Some more good news, our January ad valorem increased $60,000 this January. Over last January, we received $9.4 million this January. This time last year, $9.34 million. So, a couple of good pieces of news. We got to add $360,000 back to the budget. We are down in payroll, $71,000, which means we're up in revenue, $71,000, and then in just other general expenses, we're down $51,000, which means we're up in our budget. One thing that I want to continue to remind you about, this is fiscal year '18, we're operating on fiscal year '16's weighted ADM. Next year, in fiscal year '19, we'll be operating on fiscal year '17's weighted ADM. We are down 220 students with no weights. So, projected shortfall is $750,000 to $1 million, which I've already talked to you about. So, that's just an update on where we are with midterm adjustment.
Quick question, the $60,000 ad valorem increase in January?
She already had that budgeted.
Can you extrapolate that per month? I mean, is that going to be somewhat similar every month?
Yes, it will. January is a big collection month for us, and April's a big collection month, and Brenda had already calculated those. It's, it's a projection about every time. So, our ad valorem money is our most stable money. It's something that we count on and always typically increases.
But she'd counted the $60,000.
It's already in the budget. I wanted to add it back.
Going forward each month, too?
No, we can't count $60,000 going forward each month, because we won't collect as much in, in February, March.
Projected something?
Yes, she did project an increase. April will be another big month for us. So, overall, good carryover, and we're, we're sitting fine right now. Any other questions? We talked about this in finance, and I just wanted to give a brief update to the public.
Okay, item six, consent agenda, agenda. Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Item seven, action items. Seven one, consider and take action on following financial reports.
Motion to approve seven point one.
Second, we talked about them all in the finance committee.
Any discussion? Vote?
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Seven two, consider and take action on a resolution to adopt the Wildcat as the district-wide mascot. Discussion, or no? Motion?
We'll make a motion to approve seven point two.
Motion's been made. Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Seven three, consider and take action on the following contract agreements. A, contract with Pire School Premier Subscription for Student Information System Software Subscription, Maintenance and Sport Fees, and B, consider, agreement with Unique Travels and Tours of Park City High School Orchestra Dallas Texas, Texas Educational Field Trip. Need a motion?
I'll motion it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Seven four, consider and take action on proposed executive session with the following purpose, discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of personnel in the attached detailed personnel report, discuss the superintendent of schools contract, discuss employment of superintendent for executive session, discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation, and to discuss a matter whereby disclosure of additional information would violate FERPA. Need a motion for executive session?
I'll move.
Second? All, vote?
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Will adjourn for executive session. Item seven seven, consider and take action on the compensation for employees who qualified for a step increase in '17, '18 school year. We'll need a motion on that. On the step raise?
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's compensation.
I mean stipend, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Stipend, okay, I need a motion?
Seven point seven, I make a motion.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? We'll vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Seven eight, consider and take action on annual ratification renewal of the contract for the superintendent of schools. Don?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we renew the contract for the superintendent of public schools starting July 1st of nineteen, or 2018, for three years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Seven nine, vote to approve or not approve recommendation for termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of personnel.
I'll move to approve the personnel report.
Second.
In our handouts.
Any discussion? We'll vote.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
New business?
We do have some new business. We had an employee resign over the weekend, so I would like to, you to consider accepting the resignation of Deanna Witten, third-grade teacher at Garfield. Then, do a change of status from a contract sub to move her into that position, Angela Buller. She was actually, you had already approved her certified hire for the '18, '19 school year, but we, she's been a contract sub, and we would just change her status into certified teacher at Garfield, third grade.
Motion to approve, new business?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Got all your new business?
That's it.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
We need to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.